To here.
It's on the west side.
I had to run through the errands before I got here.
We can get our chat.
Yeah.
Think we should be live and yes, our chat is up. We should be good.
Okay.
There was like last time.
Oh my God. Can you lose batteries at 100%? This thing keeps turning on in my bag. Sent all my files over for all our minutes. We gotta like catch up on poor girl. I'm like, here's your priority. So see if she gets anything done for next week then. Totally focused on four council, Thorin, two, four council, special council meetings first.
Yeah.
My US motor that.
Yeah, that's not what mine looks like.
I don't, I don't mind together. I'd go.
First Tuesday of the month. I'll tell my mother-in-law.
We are live. This already knows. I'm just, okay.
Okay, we're good. You can everything sound really good.
Okay.
So, sounded good. Yes. Good evening, everybody. Like to welcome everybody to committee of the whole meeting of the village of Walton Hills, Tuesday, April 5th, 2022 at 7:04 PM. Roll call?
Councilman Nielsen.
Here.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller.
Here.
Councilwoman Allen.
Here.
Councilman Spitznagle.
Here.
Councilman Whedon.
Present. All of council present along with our fiscal officer, Angela Ravae, and our law solicitor, John Montello. Okay. I do have Lori Spraggar from HR Partners. She'll be here this evening for our executive session. So, I had her come later because I knew we had a meeting. Item three, any comments related to agenda items? Council?
Okay.
Any other comments or items from residents that are here or any residents that are watching our live stream? We are live streaming it. Let us know if you're having a problem with picking it up or not hearing the volume. We did check it and it seems to be working well. We did have an economic development committee meeting at 5:30 and that seemed to broadcast pretty well.
Mylan Verzick said, "Sound is loud and clear. Video is good."
Good. Thank you. Hold on. Thank you. So that's great. I know what you worked on, uh, Jennifer and Brian, getting this thing broadcast and getting everything cleared up. I appreciate it. I think the residents appreciate it too. So it's, it's good. And, um, okay. So do you want to move on to the legislation? Okay. Ordinance 2022 dash four, storage of junk vehicles that which is 660.07. I just, we wanted to get, start talking about this. I know it was brought up, I, I think in the infrastructure committee and then Mr. Kellman brought it up. And as you see, some of the changes, one of them is, uh, 660.07, item C, uh, where it gives, uh, the power to the police department when authorized by the police chief or his designee. And also we have the dollar amount in there too. I know I did talk to a few council members, uh, just in general. I had a meeting today with Mr. Kellman and I know the last couple of days, him and George Smarigan, who does a lot of our zoning changes and does zoning changes for, for a majority of the communities in Collier County, uh, him and Rob have been going back and forth. And they want to continue more discussion, um, about it because they feel 660.17, 660.18, and 1492, um, kind of cross into this a little bit. Uh, Rob did say, he said, "Mayor, if, if, uh, council wanted to pass this 660.07, it's a, it's a good piece of legislation and have no problem." But they, they'd like to look at it a little more, um, because there is some cross thing. So I said, "Well, that's fine. I'll, I'll let council know that." Um, so we can talk about it a little bit. And then I said, "Rob, depending on what, uh, happens with George and, and yourself and myself and, uh, maybe we'll have him at the next COW meeting or, um, you know, just have Rob or whatever." So I just want to let you know, it's kind of a work in progress here. I thought it was important. No, we get it going. It seems we're, we're very effective when we get it on the agenda and we look at it because it's a lot easier to look at something, um, and make the changes and, and council is very good at that and, um, and Rob too, you know, when you have something in front of you, something picks up and that's why today he wanted to meet and we wanted to kind of talk about 660 and 17. And he said, "Mayor, let me just continue my conversations with George." Let's see. I did, George did send, let's see if I have it with me or it's on my computer still. Do you have with George? Let me see if that will relate to what. I know John's been involved with it too, looking at it. I, I, just to kind of refresh your memory, in our industrial area is really where it was brought up in our industrial area. We have a lot of parking lots. It seems people are parking commercial vehicles there that aren't related to their business. A lot of vehicles are junk vehicles and, uh, we needed a more effective way to address it. And so that's where this is evolving from. So. Now, yeah, I won't read. This is pretty, pretty lengthy, but, um.
Mayor?
Yes.
So there's even vehicles there that are up on blocks with parts of them missing. You know, it looks like they're being pieced out. It, I really hate to use the term, "It looks like a war zone," considering what's going on in the world, but it, it does look really bad back there. And considering everything that Tom was saying about getting these areas cleaned up. Is, Mayor, is 660.07 specifically residential or commercial or is that where we're trying to clean up between 660.18 and 1492?
That's where this is primarily addresses the, um, commercial end. Okay. Correct, John. And, but it does cross over into the residential and that's why our, some of that needs to still be discussed and things it's, um, you know, it's a little bit different. So, um.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
As a suggestion, uh, put this on for three readings and keep it for three readings and if, uh, during that time, Mr. Kellman and, uh,
Smarigan.
Yeah, Mr. Smarigan needs more time, we can always table it. And then work on it and then come back to the issue again. I don't know what Mr. Montello thinks about that, but that's a way to work through it. We're working through it, through it while they are. And if they don't have anything significant with this, then we've got our three readings done. And if, if significant stuff needs to be changed, we can always table it.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the issue was some of the ordinance said that it was police department and some of the ordinances were saying that it was building department. So it was trying to figure, you know, out who would take the proper responsibility for the issue, I believe.
And that's changed right here at item C.
Right.
Um, right now, which is good, such 15 day period shall be deemed to commence on the date that such person is notified in writing by the police department when authorized by the police chief or designee.
Right.
Uh, that a motor vehicle, motor vehicle is being stored in violation of this section. So that was what we wanted to do. And I think that came out of the meeting that, uh, before it was the building department, the mayor, you know, um, it was very gray. So we really, it, it, uh, felt it was more a, uh.
Definitive?
Yeah, it, in a, it's a criminal, not a crim, you know, you don't want to say criminal, but it's a, it's a, what's the word, John? Police violation.
Yeah, the junk vehicles is absolutely, the other one deals with recreational vehicles.
Yeah, which is a little.
Commercial heavy vehicles. So we just want to make sure it's all coordinated and there's no conflicting laws, you know, whatever. Just make sure it hasn't been looked at in a while. So just, seems to be a little confusion, like you say, police, building, whatever. So we want to just make sure it's on the same page.
Mayor Coleridge?
Yes.
So, so with the, with the recommended change, uh, notified in writing by the police department or the police chief if his designee, that quote unquote, a violation ticket, is that?
Yes, if you go to the next, if you go to item D, whoever violates a section is guilty of a misdemeanor of the fourth degree with a penalty of 30 days in jail and up to a $250 fine.
Right. So their notification begins a payable offense and court proceeding if necessary and all of that stuff.
I'll let Mr. Montello answer that.
Well, I think they, they'll give them 50 days notice. If they don't do it, then the police will issue a ticket. So they'll give them a little heads up and say, "Get it out of there." And obviously if it's a major problem, we can maybe give them a little more time before decide to write the ticket. If it's a lot of, a lot of dismantled or essentially damaged parts, then perhaps we could wait longer on the 50 day period. At least we got a little timeframe there in 15 days. And then we bumped up the penalty for minor misdemeanor, which is just a $150 fine. So we have a little teeth into it. You know, that they could possibly go to jail if they don't comply. So hopefully they will comply and we won't have to do that.
So I didn't, I, I, you know, Rob, I could have had Rob here tonight, but he, I didn't want, just to kind of be so general. I want to wait till they got more specific answers and, and, um, exactly, he's getting the, you know, George is going to help tweak it with us and, and, and get it, uh, get exactly what we want to address the issues we have. So, and it needs to be updated. You, if you look, it's pretty old.
1962.
That was a great year though.
That was way before I was born.
That was a great year. April 25th, 1962 was even better. Yeah, I just, uh, you've got time if you, you know, for gifts and things like that.
Oh, our last meeting was in 19, we're not going to be here to give them to you. We're going to end up with a special council meeting.
I'm only kidding. But it is, that is mine. Anybody's that concerned. I don't want to count anyways. Believe my big six oh. My gosh. Time goes quick, that's for sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I appreciate very much this legislation being gone through and put together and stuff and, and updated. So, and I would also respectfully ask to introduce it when the time comes. And I think third, if we do three readings, that'll give them plenty of time to get everything sorted out with it.
Correct. Good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If, you know, since, uh, we are re-doing this and it's, you know, probably go, you know, three readings, um, would it be, uh, I don't know, would it be the right thing maybe to send a letter out, not, not just to the people who are, you know, ones where you're kind of going after because their yards are looking so bad, you know, they're, maybe send a letter out to, uh, to everyone. Everyone in, in the village and if, if you do have a vehicle or you don't have a vehicle, just giving them a heads up that we're, we're in the process of, of updating this and give them a chance to take care of it on their own before any, or we have to have the police issue a, any kind of a statement to them or a ticket to them saying, "You have 50 days." I mean, it, just kind of in general, just to say that, hey, this is what we're doing to make our village look, uh, look a little better and, you know, I mean, give the businesses a heads up and give the residents a heads up.
Well, we put what we do in the journal, as you know, we, we put all the legislation that's passed in the journal. Okay. So I guess what we could do is, you know, make some kind of note, like, you know, take notice or something, you know.
Give them a heads up.
It will be, if, if you do three readings, it'll go in the journal and it'll show, you know, first reading. So they'll have that in there each journal until it passes. So, yeah.
It doesn't sound like we're coming down on any one person for any particular reason. It may, uh.
No, it's, it's not just one. It's.
I know, but it may make things go a little smoother than if it's one or two people that it goes a little bit smoother, then it's one or two people. I mean, but if it's, you know, it's, uh, just, just a suggestion.
Right. No problem. That's, and it, I know it, it stemmed from the big concern is the, in the industrial area. But yeah, we can do that in a, in a legis, you know, in our, in the journal and make a little note or something. Because I mean, we do have something in place now.
Right.
It's, we just gotta, we just want to tighten it up and, and make the, so, yep. No problem there. Make note of that. Anything else related to, uh, ordinance 2022 dash four? It will be on the next COW meeting. Uh, we'll have more discussion on that and and as it evolves, if Rob and George put something together, we'll forward it to you, everybody too.
Mayor Coleridge?
Yes.
Yeah, I did have one question and I don't know, uh, in this, in this ordinance, um, you know, some of our, some of the properties, um, in the village, in the commercial industrial area, they're all different. Some are corner lots and then some have acreage behind, behind them. Does this apply to areas where they may not have a garage, but they maybe have storing vehicles behind their property, not visible from the street? How, does this cover that up as well?
I would say yes.
Okay.
If, you know, but if it's not a problem, it's, you know.
Item B kind of addresses that in, um,
Yeah.
The second, you know, except as otherwise permitted by law, the storage of any junk vehicle pod, any lot or land set within the village is hereby declared to be a public nuisance and is prohibited unless the same is within a completely enclosed building or garage.
Right.
So I think that would kind of probably address that. Yeah, because it's not, you know, it's making it sound like it's on any part of your property. I can, we can make a note of that.
If you can't see it, it's not a public nuisance.
Well, in some cases, like I said, in some cases, you know, you, you can see.
Right. And that's what you were talking about earlier with me and stuff. Yeah.
Right.
Especially in the commercial area.
But I believe that's a lot of what Rob runs into also in the village here is, you know, resident keeps getting complaints about their property because they are much more out there in the open compared to, you know, maybe somebody would, would not see something in your backyard, Ray. You know, for where you live or me, I don't have anybody behind me. So. When I've asked Rob in the past, he said, "If you can see it from the street, yeah."
Okay. I made a note of that too, Ray. So.
Yep.
Yeah, John, you up for Georgia then? Any questions from council anymore related to item A, 2022 dash four? Any, uh, questions or anything related, yes, from the residents that are here or residents that are watching a live stream?
Jeff Alexander, Walton Road. Um, my experience with some of the village, I don't know how ours is written. If it's an unlicensed vehicle falls in some, I had cars that, two or three cars that I had for a hobby that as long as they had tags on them, they were allowed to be kept. So it's kind of a gray area in some cases on the residential side. Um, somebody has vehicles that are for their hobby or whatever and they, they may be for, but, um, I know kind of like if nobody complains, it's left alone. Now, if your neighbor complains, then you'll be approached with it. But I know the, uh, some, some communities have the license to involve too. So.
Right.
I don't know what ours says about that.
Yeah, we could, go ahead.
I believe ours does have a.
We have that somewhere.
About the residential portion of it, it does mention the licensing.
Right.
In the, in the residential, in, in the commercial, a.
There is somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In this, in what we have here, which is really addressing the commercial on 660.07, it's junk motor vehicle and they kind of explain, they give a definition of what a junk motor vehicle is. It means any motor vehicle is dismantled extensively, that damaged or inoperative. Or which is in such condition and operation of the same on public ways would constitute a violation of the law. So that, that last one there, such condition, you know, you can't operate something on the road either if it's not licensed. This, because we do have that other part and thing, but those are, uh, that's a good, good point there. It's, so we'll note that too as we go through this. Any other questions related to 660.07? Okay. Council good? Okay, we'll move on to item B, resolution 2022 dash six. That's the Sharpskate Senior Lawn Care. Okay. Just to kind of give another little briefing on that, um, I do have that. Where's mine? I have the original contract, not the original one.
Favorite.
Yeah, I brought it with me. What am I doing here? We originally bid this and I get mixed up with something here. Come on, where's my Sharpskates? Oh, it's right in front of me here. Okay. So we originally bid this two years ago with Sharpskates. It had a, uh, second year option on it. Council wanted, we wanted to exercise the second year option. We notified Sharpskates and, uh, they said they, and it also had a back out clause for both parties. They could exercise that option with us because the price of labor and, and gas, um, which, uh, we understood because normally they would. They've been, you know, very good that way. So we, we had to put it out for a bid again. So we rebid the job that, you know, for the senior lawn care and Sharpskates was the only one that bid on the, uh, on it again. Okay. So, um, we have been talking about it. It is going to start mid-April here. We're in this position not because we didn't do our due diligence. Um, we went through the normal process. Things just changed with the, with the contractor and rightfully so. I mean, we do know uh, between labor and, and his gas costs that, um, there wasn't a lot there and, and we appreciate him, uh, bidding on it again, but they were the only bidder. So we do have that on there, uh, for, you know, for tonight, for our special council meeting, for suspension. We have talked about that. Um, and the reason is it is going to start for the seniors mid-April here.
April 15th.
April 15th. So, um, and I don't know if there's any questions related to that? From council? Pretty, okay.
Mr. Mayor, any letter there? Would you just go over the, the prices just for people in the residence?
Yes. Uh, let's see here. Just so you know, it was Rob Kellman, our, uh, service director did review it and he does recommend it. Um, I did read this letter already into record, but I'll give you the prices. So up to one acre for lawn cutting is now 1,095. Up to one acre for lawn cutting with leaf pickup is $1,370. One to two acres for lawn cutting is $1,380. One to two acres for lawn cutting with leaf pickup is $1,715. Two to three acres for lawn cutting is $1,785. Two to three acres for lawn cutting and leaf pickup is 22,175 dollars. Uh, let's see, what else can I share with you? It is payable in two half, two payments?
That's, I think, us. We pay them in two.
You pay them in two payments. Yeah, that's part, you're right. That's part of the contract. Yeah. That's really it for the, that. It's been on the website because we, we were able to, you know, we moved forward with people applying because that didn't matter as far as, you know, um, what they, you know, what they, if they were interested, we'd sent out, sent them out an application. So we moved forward with that. Um, now it's up to them whether they want to decide, uh, depending on the new pricing. So. Okay. Any other questions? Any questions from residents related to that? Yes, Lee.
Hi, Lee Nielsen, Tulip Lane. Um, my question is just one of curiosity. Have we as a village done anything about, um, working with landscapers on environmental issues? Uh, the, the stats on the amount of pollution from a lawnmower are pretty horrific. Admittedly, I use a lawn service and they use gas-powered lawnmowers and they use those awful noisy mower things. Um, but I'm curious as a community if that's not an issue that we should be addressing. So you don't need to answer it now. I just put it out there because I think that it's something that we are going to be faced with. You know, the state of California has outlawed any gas-powered lawn equipment. So California is usually ahead of us by five or six years. So this may be coming and I put that to the stewards of our community to consider for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Any comments from council related to that or? Okay. Any other comments related to item B, resolution 2022 dash six? From residents that are here or any residents that are watching live stream or any other?
No one in live stream.
Okay.
Mayor Coleridge?
Yes.
Just a quick comment. I don't know if it makes the, makes it, if it's really that, uh, significant. But in section one, first line of section one just reads a little quirky. The mayor be and he is hereby authorized. Just not quite sure what that.
Oh, is that a typo?
Not sure what that should say. It just kind of looks a little odd.
Yes, I, I see what you're saying. Section, section one, the mayor be and he is hereby authorized. Well, typos we can do without a.
I got the, what are you looking at? Because I got the mayor and the clerk of the village.
That's not.
Bills. Oh, be and they, on the after there. I wasn't there yet.
There you go.
I'm like, what you talking about?
So whatever it should read.
You know that? You also have, that's also in the, uh, lake club contract to the same wording. So maybe that, is that standard?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's what, that's what I'm looking at. I'm sorry.
We're looking at Sharpskates. It's got it as well.
All right. I'm ahead of myself. Nevermind.
Well, we'll take a look at it. That's fine. Either way.
I'm looking at the next one.
You're not getting out of here that early, Mr. Whedon.
Sorry.
Okay. Any other questions related to 2022 dash six? Like to, if we could get suspension on that for tonight in our special council meeting, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, what happened with 2022 dash five?
Was five was something we didn't need anymore. John, do you remember what that was that I ended up renumbering?
Well, let's see if I have my old agenda here.
Yeah, pull, I'm going to bring my old agenda in there. You got old agenda.
Yeah, I do. Does, do we have to, should we?
We ended up taking it out, doing something else. Do you understand? So something else already has that number now because we pulled this and we were going to go rebid it.
Oh, I, okay. I don't.
Do you, do you get what I'm saying?
Do we, do we need to, well, John, you can.
I think we had five. Is that an old one?
Twenty-two dash five is tracks, construction, tulip.
Right.
Yeah.
So basically originally we may have had this as five, but once we yanked it, then five became open. So basically originally we may have had this as five, but once we yanked it, then five became open again for us to use.
So five is done.
So five's done and that's why this is.
I follow where you're at.
Did they miss anything? Nope, thank you, because I did jump ahead once or.
We're good, we have five.
Scrivener's error, remember? So we didn't know what that meant.
File out, five was the award to Trax Construction.
Thank you, Mayor.
And don't forget, you're also looking at an ordinance first and then a resolution. So if that's made sense because it's going four, six, yeah, I see what you're saying. But one was an ordinance.
See, now I, now I feel good. You always tease me.
I do tease you about the security blanket.
Pile and guess what? I had, I had.
You had the answer right in front of you.
See that? Once in a while, right?
It's got to be a tourist thing. Maybe. My dad's.
It is a tourist thing.
On the table.
My mom, my mom.
My dad worked as a labor foreman.
I know all about that. Your mom understands fully. Aunt Capicorne.
A little bit, yes.
Okay.
I won't, I won't see those piles in my office.
So any, anything from the live stream for twenty?
Nothing for the live stream.
Okay, now we're, we're good to move forward from item B. Everybody good? Item C is resolution twenty twenty-two dash seven. That's the Walton Hills Lake Club Agreement. Yesterday, myself, Jennifer Allen and Mr. Spitznago, we did meet with Sean just to kind of go over the contract. Go over, because I have been talking to Natalie too, talk about some of the issues they had. You know, mostly with, you know, the kids coming down and stuff. And then, of course, some of the issues we had. And we, we just had a good, good discussion there and talked about those and, and, um, went through the contract. So there really wasn't a lot of. Brian, maybe you can, because I remember you were kind of like, almost like the secretary and wrote some things down for us. There wasn't a lot of changes with the contract.
Yeah, there was just two minor ones.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll update.
Actually, there was only one change, really.
And just the attachment.
And then the, they were going to put the attachment in. Sean McCormick was going to send that, send it or, or deliver that to us. But item, or paragraph number three on page two of the Walton Hills Lake Service Agreement. Third line down in that third paragraph. It, it talks about lifeguards being on duty in activities in state, as stated in paragraph two. We are going to change that to, say, in paragraph five. So in other words, paragraph five deals with the Parker program. So there will be like, we wanted to make, ensure that there were, um, the required number of lifeguards down there when the Parkers were actively down there. And that would be on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So that was the only change.
Right. No event changes or anything then for their events? Okay, because last year that was our little updates was. And then, Mr. Mayor, um, I, did you say that Sean was going to email the lake rules and regulations that we should have attached to this? Okay. Okay.
Because we, we have it in here as, as attachment A.
But we have no attachment.
And we have no attachment. They've updated a few. So whatever we have in our file, we need a updated, um, thing. So she's going to get that to you, Angela. It's actually item seven as attachment exhibit A.
I think, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think that she was going to, not that we, uh, put that as a requirement. She was going to give us a copy of their insurance.
That is correct, too.
That is good, yes.
An updated copy.
Yep. Well, that is addressed in there and that's right.
It is addressed in there, yeah, that they'll have so much insurance liability, insurance and stuff.
Yeah, it's section seven, so, one million dollars.
Yep.
I'll also have it on the agenda for next week's COW meeting too.
Yeah, I'll put the updates.
Any questions from counsel relating?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to say, I think we had a very good meeting with Sean. I left there feeling, and I felt that she was satisfied and we had a lot of talk about issues that were going on last year with the program. And, you know, we're, we're addressing those for the lake and for Parkers and stuff too. But being able to sit down and talk with her, I had a better understanding of what the issues were and where they were coming from and stuff. So I think a lot of those will be addressed, especially for our Parker parents this year.
I would, I would agree. Any other questions? Any questions from the residents that are here or any residents that are watching our live stream? Or anybody else that's watching our live stream or? We will have it on, uh, the next COW meeting also. Any questions from counsel? Okay. All right, well, other, other business? I just have a couple of things here. Let's see here. I can give a, I know today after meeting with Rob, um, him and Joe had a construction meeting today with, um, Trax. So Joe did send me this, this afternoon, um, at three oh eight today, just, uh, and so Ray, you'll be getting a, a copy too, not of this, but when they put, let's see, put mayor and all. The contractor for the Tulip Lane Water Main Replacement Project has informed us that they plan to begin mobilizing the site on four eighteen twenty-two and plan to complete the work five twenty-six twenty-two. The schedule is tentative and also dependent upon the weather. We will provide further information as it becomes available. So Rob told me they're putting a construction schedule together. And that construction schedule will be, you know, detailed on what will exactly happen. And then I'll share that with, with counsel and everything will be in there from when the residents get notified to, and how they're going to get notified to all that. But I just wanted to tell you, today was the start of it. They had their construction meeting, the contractors putting that schedule together. They just wanted to share with me, to share with you that the meeting took place and the project's moving along. So, um, as soon as I get that, we'll share it. And I, I know, uh, Lee and some of our residents expressed that they would like to know that and we will do that. And it's something that, you know, maybe we'll even, I'll see what, what their schedule looks like. We can post some of those things for the residents, you know, um, on our, so when I do receive that, Ray, I'll make sure you and the committee, the infrastructure committee gets a copy of that and stuff or you distribute it. All of counsel. So that's where that's at. I just wanted to, Joe sent that this afternoon. And Rob told me it was that Joe sent that. Actually, some good news. He actually said, they, they have that, you know, four eighteen to five twenty-six. But between us, if the weather's good, the contractor thinks they might complete it in a week. So that would be very good because they, Rob and Joe expressed to the contractor, the less interruption for the residents, the better, of course. And that's when he said, well, we're hoping the, you know, but they, they're going to have, they're going to give themselves some leeway. But it's, it's very much within the, in the project. But he felt they get good weather, though, it should be done pretty quickly. So, okay, then I, we did have a Economic Development Committee meeting this afternoon at five thirty. All of counsel was here, um, along with Tom Jordan, our Economic Development Consultant. And as we discussed different things, Mr. Jordan and, and Mr. Nielsen, the chairman of the committee, kind of touched base about the Northfield Road sidewalk. And, uh, the end of last week and just yesterday and stuff, there's been quite a few correspondence from Congressman Dave Joyce's office about the community project funding program. So we did submit a project, um, to them. And I'm going to read the letter I received from, from Joe Gelati, our village engineer. And about Northfield Road proposed sidewalk. Congressman Dave Joyce's office is accepting grant funding applications for the federal community project funding, CPF program. The village has submitted a grant application for a hundred percent funding for the proposed Northfields Road sidewalk project. This project would be to install a new sidewalk along the east side of Northfield Road between Northfield Road Bridge and MGM Casino. The project, if funded, would connect the existing sidewalk at the bridge to the casino property. The future Ford redevelopment and many, many other industrial properties. This improvement would provide safe pedestrian access for employees to access their place of work and public transportation. This is especially important since there have been multiple pedestrian-involved accidents along this corridor in recent years. Given the lack of existing right-of-way or tree lawn space along Northfield Road, such a sidewalk would need to be constructed just outside of the current village right-of-way. Such a sidewalk would be approximately six thousand six hundred feet in length, one point two five miles. The overall project cost is estimated to be nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This includes not only physical construction of a new sidewalk, but also all the costs and services involved to acquire the necessary right-of-way for property owners along the length of the east side of Northfield Road. I was happy, and I know John too was involved. We, we submitted this project. I was, uh, you know, I got this this afternoon too, um, from Joe to share it with everybody because I know this counsel and this administration and the residents, we've all been concerned, especially in, in that fatality that happened. And we've had other fatalities, um, which we really, will express with the federal government. It's a federal grant. It's a hundred percent funding. And just wanted to share that. Now, we are, Mr. Jordan did make a point, if you do watch the live stream there, that does, that doesn't mean we sit and wait for this. That we, we're going to apply for grants, um, other funding that's going to be available. Some of it is eighty-twenty, um, and that we're going to apply for that. Because as we know, nothing is guaranteed. So you apply for as much as you can and, and see what we receive. Also, there was good discussion through the Economic Development Committee that, um, let's say, some of the property owners, let's say the redevelopment of the Ford property, they're putting in a sidewalk and we wouldn't have to put in that sidewalk, that this grant would probably allow us to do other improvements along that corridor, which would be greatly needed. So just wanted to share that. I, I know as counsel, we, we've been concerned about doing something there. It's not that we don't want to do it. As a village as a whole, we couldn't afford that project. So we had to seek other ways to make it happen and, and, um, just wanted to share that. And as we continue to move forward and hopefully, you know, hopefully we'll get the grant. Or maybe get other grants for that project. But just wanted to share that with everybody and with the residents that we're very concerned about that sidewalk there too.
We do have a comment from Karen Remming. She said, thank you, this, this is a start.
Okay. Any, well, if anybody has anything to say, that's, that's my two other business. Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Does any, you want, Angela has one and then if counsel has anything to, go ahead, Angela.
Um, okay, I do apologize because I think I asked at one point with everyone in the room if we were ready to go over salt yet because I know it's time and then I thought we weren't ready. I thought I was waiting for more details. We had gotten an email March sixteenth from ODOT, um, passed on to Lisa, Rob and myself. So in there is where it's, um, you know, our, our legislation's a lot more general than I remembered. So we're basically giving legislation to say that we're going to go ahead and partner with ODOT. And then they will pick the vendor later. So basically, Rob gives them what tonnage we're going to need. And then we just have to have our legislation passed ideally by April twenty-ninth. If that couldn't happen, they can work with us still. So Lisa brought that to my attention today and I'm like, oh, okay, so then here I am, I could have just put it on. So we'll, we'll see that next COW meeting, um, you know, same as we do every year. And ODOT's out there working to figure out their website. If you go to it, will still show that they do not have someone selected yet. So it's, you know, it's not like they're sitting on, sitting on a vendor just yet. I think they gather everybody's tonnage requirements first and then that's kind of their bargaining power. So I did ask Rob how much we'd be requesting. He said we used about eighteen hundred tons this year and we're going to request eighteen hundred again, so. We have a minimum we need to purchase, so then you kind of want to just commit accordingly and, and not overcommit, so.
And talking, we do like to keep some in reserve and, um, they, we've done a great job with that because it seems to always go up for price and never go down. So whatever we can store has been a savings to us. So that's important. And it's paid off when we've had a shortage. We were one of the communities that always, you know, we never ran out. And there was even times when we, um, shared it with some of our neighbors. Just to keep everybody safe. Any questions on that? So that will be, we'll have that. Probably would like to see suspension on it. If, if not, that's fine too. But it's really just saying for us, are we in agreement to enter the consortium and then equalize the pricing? And ODOT's done a great job with that. For us and the other communities. Anybody else have anything for other business?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jennifer.
I didn't get a chance actually when I was talking to Rob earlier, but what's going on with the trucks? The last I heard, we were like at least sixteen months out with ordering one and.
So Rob and I have been back and forth. I'm going to fill out, so when I had spoken to the finance people, nothing, a fin, a contract and a, and a credit app, so to speak, only lasts six months. So I actually spoke to like the head at the, the guy at the bank, not even the finance person. First I spoke to him, then I spoke to the finance person at Rush. So I will fill out paperwork for her if that's what she's on hold for because I asked Rob to just go ahead and call and ask them if they want purchase orders. In terms of getting approved, because that's where I was coming from, like, are we going to get approved for this? The gentleman from, um, I'm going to say Wells Fargo, but it might not have been Wells Fargo. I think it was a different bank. He said, it's like very rare that a municipality would not get approved. So he can give us a soft letter to show that we are approved and I think she can do the same, um, the woman that's over at Rush. So I will fill her application out for that purpose only. But basically, again, you know, fed rates will change. So there might just be a modification, you know, come January if fed rates change. And we've been locked into this particular price. If anything, we could either modify, you know, how many payments we're going to make so that we're not, you know, going to go way over on price or anything like that. They don't anticipate the fed rates to go up that much, but let's say it increases by a percent. Because they can't lock us into a percent until closer as well. So with the whole, it's a whole big conundrum of since the trucks can't be ready in all that time, you know, there's really no grabbing the financing right now for it. So, so we'll have a soft letter to show that we're approved. And I, and I keep telling Rob, go ahead and, and ask if they just want some POs. So I'll fill out that paperwork for, for Penny over at Rush and, and see what she has to say. But again, it, like, nothing will be finalized with financing until we are closer to the trucks happening.
So are we, are we going to order two trucks?
We're going to order two if that's the case. If that gentleman from the actual bank can get me the soft letter to show that we would be approved for two, then we'll order two.
Mayor Corogoff?
Yes.
I just have a question. So how, so how does the leasing aspect and the bidding aspect, how does that, how does that come together?
The bidding on where we're getting them from?
Yes.
That's Rob's area. That's not my area right now. I mean, like, he's gone out to that vendor because I probably have used them in the past. I think he checked Valley originally. That is who he checked originally. So if you, if you feel that there's, I have not bid anything this big before. So, and John, maybe you know more so too. So if you feel it's something we need to send out, usually what we're doing when we're buying vehicles, even on the police end, is we're going with a government-approved vendor.
So it's the same, the price is the same everywhere?
Right, because they give government pricing.
So that's my question is, so how does, how does the, the state, if we're using the state bidding, the state-approved process? How does that, is that, is there a lease aspect of the state bidding process or is that a separate entity?
I think that's probably separate entity, yes. Because we're, as an individual municipality, that's what I was asking when I called the finance guy. Like, hey, we've not leased anything besides some police radios. So I'm more concerned about will we be approved for a government lease? You know, it's, it's us, it's not. You know, it's us, it's not, you know, the pricing might be along with the state, but the lease itself has nothing to do with going through the state. It's going to be our own lease, and our own credit that they will check, if that answers your question.
I think it does.
Okay. That's the way I interpreted it.
Well, I mean, we were, I mean, our estimates were 180.
Each one's about 180, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, and.
So two trucks for that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But, Ms. Mayor, the notes that I had written down, Councilman Whedon, were that it's usually a five-term lease at about 2.8%, approximately $34,000 a year, and after five years, we buy it outright for a dollar.
And that's, yeah, that's typical, I mean, and the bank can give us more information on that. Obviously, the finding, financing itself will end up probably initiating through Rush when the time comes, but I wanted to just go straight to the top, to the bank, to ask, because, you know, you can go say you're going to get financed at a dealership, but then you get there and it's a whole different kind of financing than you thought it was going to be based on your credit, so, so that's why I reached out to the gentleman at the bank first. They seem, I mean, we're going to, you know, whatever they're offering us, though, it's not going to, it's not going to change much, so even if the Fed rates change, by the time we can lock in the rate, we can always just modify, you know, our payment itself, our payment structure, to not, you know, go over what we've approved in legislation to pay for. Yeah.
And right now, we're looking at, like, August then of '23, possibly?
Yeah, I guess, if that's when they say the trucks can be ready.
And it might get worse.
So the hard thing is, of course, you know, if we're going to encumber, I mean, that's the thing to keep in mind, we're going to go ask them, you know, typically with police, this is how it goes anyway, so I'm assuming that's what Rush is going to want. We're going to initiate two POs this year, so you're going to encumber all that money, so meaning at the end of this year, when we close books, because those aren't going to be ready till next year, that's going to dip into estimated resources available for next year, obviously, because that's when we would anticipate paying for them anyway. And I can, I can ask around too, just to make sure, in terms of encumbering of the entire amount, if we're going to lease, do you get what I'm saying? Like, I don't want to encumber the entire amount if that's not something necessary if we're going to be on a lease. And it may be that I can encumber what's going to be that first payment. So it's all going to depend on what Rush wants in their purchase order from us, or if it's just going to be more of an agreement versus an actual purchase order. Yeah, yeah. So I'll get that figured out and let you guys know how that will play out, so that maybe we don't have to have such a large number of encumbrance on the end of our, on the books at the end of our, because if we're not paying for it outright, I imagine we can do it in parts. Which is kind of what I did for police radios, you know, I budgeted what we're going to pay in our payment this year for police radios, yeah.
Anybody else have anything for other business?
Lena Elson Tulip Lane. First and the highest priority for me is the timing of the paving, because I have a family party coming up, so that's very important, thank you for the information. Secondly, I was listening to the discussion of junk vehicles, we still have some junk houses that I'm concerned about in this community, and that actually relates to my other item I wanted to talk about. I think about, I'd have to go back and look, but I think it was about three or four months ago, I asked a question about strategic planning, and what I understood was that there was some governmental, I'm not sure, I think it was county group that would help out in organizations like this, to begin the strategic planning process. I'm curious as to where that is. My observation, as somebody who does this kind of work with organizations, with companies, is that our council is good at handling what's coming up, but I'm more concerned about what's in front of us. And so even my statement about environmental issues relates to this. So I'm very, very interested in seeing our community stewards, you, and me, and others, get involved in doing whatever we can to begin to develop at least a three-year strategic plan for Walton Hills, that would, that would, first of all, focus on what really are we about, and what do we want to be about as we go forward, and as our community changes, because it is changing. When I moved into this community 32 years ago, I was the youngest person on my block. I'm now the oldest, and I'm shrunk an inch, which is depressing. But I felt like there were so many older people in Walton Hills, and there were, and that's changing. And so we, as a community, need to think about that in terms of our planning, and think about how we prepare for the future. So I want to know where we are, if we are anywhere, and if we aren't anywhere, what our plans are for getting, moving forward with a, some sort of strategic planning process. And once again, I volunteer to help in any way possible, even to the point of serving coffee and cookies. Okay? Do we have any, any update on that? Because the conversation was, there was some service, I thought it was with the county, but I could be wrong. No update?
Oh, no, go ahead, if anybody has.
I, well, Ms. Mayor, I would just say, I think the biggest block for us right now is the financing part.
Yeah, the County, he does have, you know, you can, they used to, I mean, we did it one time, you know, they set up a master plan for us. Of course, it comes with a fee, but that's something we can, you know, we can, I refer that to which committee?
Well, it depends on whether other people think it's important. You know, I personally think it's really important, and I.
Well, it doesn't hurt to investigate it, and see where we're at and stuff, so I can't, I agree with you, and look to see, go ahead, Brian.
And, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I agree with you, wholeheartedly. We, you know, the reason why, you know, we came through some really tough years, it's getting better, our finances are getting better, but we had a, we were at the point where, you know, we, we had a five-year road plan, we had several different types of plans, we had the master plan that we were dealing with, and our finances were such where we were just stamping out fires where they came. We, you got to have the money to implement the plan, you know, so we can make a plan, but if you don't have the money to implement it, it's kind of useless. However, I, again, I wholeheartedly agree with you that, that I think we are getting back on track with our finances, and as, you know, we looked at some roads, and we've got a three-year plan now going with roads, and as our finances get better, I agree with you that we should start looking at, and it's better to do it now, as we know our finances are starting to improve here, and hopefully we get some more businesses up there, where in future years, they give us more money, and we can then have the plan in which to implement, you know, so we're ahead of the ballgame. I agree with you. And the housing stock in the, our residential area, I agree with you.
You mean the junk houses I was talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
There's one on my street.
I agree with you also. We don't want to be the, you know, looking, poking around everybody's backyard to make sure, you know, we're, you know, you've got this infraction, you've got this infraction, whatever, but there are houses here, again, I wholeheartedly agree with you, and I think everybody here would, that, that things need to be done. Now, some houses, I know, I won't mention the streets, they are in litigation, and once they are in litigation, stuff, you have to go by the court's timeline, and so our hands are tied in as far as that goes. But I agree with you, I think more strategic implementation of enforcement of our ordinances is in order, I agree with you.
Thank you.
The other, the other point, and, you know, we can inquire with the county on what they have to offer as far as, and other agencies when it, when it comes at, but I did want to know, if you look at this month's Journal, right on the front cover, we have the Heritage Home Loan Program, which, which we've been involved with, and, and we continue to, in fact, we have a resident who's very involved in it, and actually the president of that program, and it's really a great program, and we've had residents take advantage of it to fix up their properties. So, you know.
And we have some who don't.
Right, but not only, it's not just our responsibility to cite somebody and say, "Hey, we want to be able to help them and offer some tools," and I just, the point I wanted to make is that's one of the tools, because, you know, some people just can't, they don't know how to go about it, or don't have the means, or can't afford it, and this offers a very low interest rate, and it's important to be able to give people some answers, too, instead of just saying, "Hey, you have to fix it." Well, I'd like to, but I can't, well, maybe this option would fit you. So that was one of the reasons why somebody, you know, it's on the front cover, some people go, "Why is it?" Because I felt, you know, there's people that are struggling too, and maybe this would appeal to them. And, but it does appeal to everybody, it's, there's, it's really a great program.
So we spent the first 25 minutes of this session tonight talking about junk cars, junk vehicles. Okay? And you have an ordinance for that, and you have some old ordinances, and you're working through all that, and I, I think that's great. I agree with you, I don't want to see vehicles sitting on concrete blocks. So what I'm recommending is that this group move forward in some serious way to do some strategic planning, and maybe 25 minutes on junk housing would be good, that helps us look at the future of Walton Hills. We're doing fine in terms of sort of the day-to-day, I get that, and I get that the financial constraints sometimes require that. However, however, we're a changing community, and I really think that it's important for this body, and anybody else who wants to help out in any way, to participate in helping us plan for the future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Jennifer.
With the original master plan that we have, I believe there's a provision that the county will look at it, again, it does come with a cost, I believe, but they would like evaluate and see what areas need to be readdressed, or what has been, you know, addressed and handled already and stuff, so that's something that we could look into, just to even get an idea of what the cost is for them to reevaluate the original master plan.
Mayor Colgar?
Yes.
Yeah, Ms. Nelson, thank you very much for your input tonight, and I was kind of, my comments are kind of leaning through the same direction of Ms. Allen, and I know I was not around for the master plan, and it's about 20 years old now, or maybe a little bit less, and the question is, you know, has, has, before we even get to the county, has council ever did any scorecarding, or actually tallying what actually has been accomplished, and what's been tossed out? And that may be a good place to start, we already have a plan. What, what, what did we achieve? What did we determine that is, you know, not feasible because of finances or other reasons? And what's still on the table that might actually fit our, our community in the future? I mean, that might be another approach, it's something we can do in a, in a special session, or just a basic work session, just focusing on, you know, what does our village look like, and what are, what are our objectives moving forward? You know, before we even turn it over to the, turn it over to the, to the county. Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think that's something that the Infrastructure Committee can take on, but certainly, to me, that would be infrastructure. And I sit on that committee.
No, I'm fine with it, I held, I held back from volunteering Mr. Nelson, because I actually thought it was more related to economic development, because when I, you know, when I think of economic development, it's all-inclusive, it's not just businesses, it's about the quality of life for all of our, I sit on both committees, so it doesn't matter there to me, but either way, you know, I, I'm willing to work with that.
Ms. Mayor?
Go ahead, Jennifer.
From what I remember on the master plan, and I was on the committee, it was way more focused on the things that our village, not the, not so much the businesses, some business aspects, primarily from what I remember, what the businesses looked like, ideas on cleaning up some of those areas. But from what I remember, it was, we were going to, we were looking at starting our own EMS service, it was beautifying certain areas and making the most out of village property, you know, for village residents and things like that, so I would just like to ask if we could get a copy, you know, of the original.
I've got one in my, in my office.
No, I'm not sure where mine is, to be very honest with you.
I've got one, I've got one in PDF format, I can, I can give it to everybody.
Don't close the door.
Door closed?
No, we're not allowed to have the door closed. I understand, but Lee, just because of the Open Meetings Act.
Yeah.
Yeah, because let's say somewhere we're coming in, and they see that, I know they're not the ones, but let's say somebody.
But thank you.
But, yeah, we.
Thanks for the thought. But Mayor, I agree with Councilman Whedon, I think that's a good, good idea, I think it's a good starting point, and see where we are in that, and.
Well, council, I think, you know, just, I served on that committee with Jennifer and other residents, and it took us a long time, and it's a very broad, it addresses a lot of things. It, a lot of things are infrastructure, but there is things from school system, infrastructure, as Jennifer said, services, it's really broad, we could probably, if we went through it, we could probably pick out something that would relate to everybody's committee and the administration itself overall. So I, my suggestion would be, you know, maybe we should bring it to a COW meeting first, you know, and kind of go from there, because it's kind of look at, and then there might be things, a lot of things have been addressed, some things haven't, but then might say, "Okay, this would go over to this committee, this would go over to this committee," and maybe that would even be more effective, you know? So we'll do that, we'll make copies of it, and we'll get it out to everybody and start taking a good look at it.
Yeah, if I could actually have a hard copy, but maybe give us a few weeks, and then the first COW in May, we can start to talk about it.
That would be, that could work, yep.
Yeah, Mayor Colgar, this is a follow-up on that, good conversation. I know we have, and this may tie in to some degree, there's, we have the survey that's out as it relates to what does recreation look like? So that's already a piece that's in progress, but then my, my question is to Chairman Spitsnagle, and is, is what happens once we receive that input? Is it, is there, you know, do we, do we formulate a focus groups with our, to kind of like discuss these options? I mean, how do we, how do we go from survey to plan for the future? Maybe some of these items are kept, some might be low-hanging fruit, others might be three, five-year down-the-road type of investments, how do we, how do we move forward with something like that, once we do receive the input from our, our surveys? What would be the next steps on something like that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, like you said, the low-hanging fruit, the stuff that's easy to implement, we can certainly implement that with the Rec Department, that's why we hire those people to, to implement those things, and so they have the skills and ability to do that, and where council can help, if they need funding, or, you know, anything like that, or they need rules changed, things like that, that we can help with that stuff. Items that are, that may come up, I can't think of anything, but if there is items, if there are items that, that come up that would require, you know, significant financial resources to do something like that, then of course that would be additional discussions with, with, I think. discussions with, with, I think it would start with the Rec Committee, and seeing if that's something that we would want to try to implement, and, and how, and then make the recommendation to council, and then talk about it all, you know, as, as a, as a body, as a, as a whole, to see how we would go about implementing that specific long-term program for whatever we wanted to do, you know. So, that's where I, I also don't want to, you know, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to brain surgery the thing either, you know. It's, some of it, I'm, I'm hoping most of it's going to be, okay, you want this, let's do that. And, and the Rec Department can put it together, and it's done, you know. It's, but I get where you, where you're saying, you know, there may be issues with other programs that people would like, that, that are going to use more resources. So, we have, we'll have to have those discussions. And I have not looked at anything. I don't, I don't know what we have gotten back yet so far, or anything. I have no idea. I, I don't know anything about numbers, or anything, so.
Well, I think, I think the April 30th was the, was the recommended or suggested deadline for the, to complete the survey. So, of course, there's still time, a lot of time for our community to, to weigh in, at least on the, from the survey aspect.
Right. And, and, you know, just because the surveys are over with, you know, I don't want to wait six months, seven months for surveys, and, you know, we, that's, they pay us to make the decisions, you know, so we want, we, you know, we have to make a decision. But if somebody comes up after the survey and has a great idea about doing something, we can always, you know, that's what, this is, the only cost is change, you know. We've been, we're, we're hoping to improve, and that's the whole, the whole idea of this process. So, this isn't, just because there may be an April 30th end date for this thing, that doesn't mean April 30th is the end of us thinking about it, you know. So, yeah, it's, it's definitely a work in progress, and it will be a work in progress for years to come. Hopefully, that's the way to do it right, you know. Did I answer your question?
You did. You did. Amber Alert, I've been getting it all thing. That's really sad. That's one of the longest ones, most notifications I've gotten for one.
And it's, and it's, yeah, it's local.
That, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That master plan that I have on a PDF, that is a public document, so if there's anybody that, that wishes to receive it, just email me, and I'll be glad to email you a copy. I'll email all, I don't know if I can email it. It's a rather big file. I don't know if I can email the whole thing to everybody at once. I'll have to do it individually.
It was a binder-
Yes.
That we had.
We'll have to maybe go out and make hard copies. It's kind of nice-
I've got a hard copy, too.
Yeah. It's kind of nice to have a hard copy, then you can kind of go through it, you can highlight and, and do whatever. So, let's see what we can-
Is there a possibility that there's some hard copies still here?
That we got one or two. I don't think we have enough for everybody. So, I'll, I'll look to see what we have.
I'll dig for mine, too, and see if I can find it.
I know I have a copy somewhere, but like you said, it's a matter of finding.
Sometimes they have a summary.
I have a copy here, though. I do have a copy here. It's on the shelf in there, so.
These documents sometimes have summaries.
Any other, any other questions? Any other, yes, Mr. Harkey?
Denny Harkey, Hickory Drive. Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm offering pleasant and respectful greetings to all who are here and to who are watching this assembly via live stream, either right now or at some time, other time in the future. I sincerely believe that everyone in our administration is honestly and carefully reviewing all situations while looking to make decisions and to take positive action on issues that will end up with the most benefit to the village, and in general, to all residents in particular. I also believe that everyone involved has agreed that the game will be played with all winners and no losers. That being said, there's been some thought put into a proposal to take the racetrack service, known as Walton Hills International Raceway for the past nine or 10 years, and turn it into a multi-purpose facility, thereby making it a racetrack, two portable pickleball courts, and a portable temporary one-half basketball court. While this may seem like a good idea to some, it's not really the best plan, and I will explain why not. And before I finish, I will propose an alternate plan that may end up producing a better result. The reasons for making a different plan are as follows. One, all sports venues, including football, baseball, or basketball, have markings that specifically define them as to exactly what they are, and there is no confusion as to what the boundaries are, and absolutely none of them have any additional marking that would cause confusion. Likewise, every racetrack in the world has specific markings and fixed walls that define its inside and outside boundaries, and our miniature racetrack in Walton Hills is no exception. The outside is contained by painted wooden barriers, and the inside is clearly, clearly defined by the paint markings on the inside. And I have Exhibit A here, which shows that, and I'll pass that all around when I'm finished, so you can have a look at what that looks like. That's the racetrack. By the same token, a pickleball court and a basketball court are also specifically marked off to show bounds, as opposed to outer bounds. Please see Exhibit B and C. Exhibit B shows the markings of a pickleball court. Exhibit C shows the markings of a temporary basketball court. The suggestion to mark two pickleball courts and a half basketball court on the same surface as the racetrack, will certainly ruin the appearance and definition of the racetrack, and make for a generally unattractive and confusing presentation, especially if different colors are used. Please see Exhibit D. This shows a drawing of what everything would look like with all the different markings on it. I'll pass that around. At this time, please be sure to know that I understand this property does not belong to me, or to anyone else in this room, and that the racers who have been using it for the past nine or 10 years are not looking for any thank you, praise, or accolades for the time, money, and effort that has been donated to keep it looking clean and attractive. It is, however, the responsibility of certain individuals to do with it what is most preferred by the majority of residents, rather than any one or two individuals in our administration. Two, in a previous meeting, the question was raised as to what will happen when racers, pickleball players, and basketball players want to use the same surface for different sports at the same time. The answer that I heard was, first come, first served. And the example presented was that it would be sort of like if two different people wanted to use the same swing. They would each need to wait their turn. While this may work with a swing, this is not, certainly not a reasonable suggestion, simply because if someone is running cars, when a group of pickleball players show up, and the racers had planned to spend the entire afternoon there, then the ballplayers get disappointed, and this is only the beginning of conflicts that could and will certainly arise under these circumstances. There is also another three. There is another, also another major logistical problem with this proposed multi-use surface. That is that the pickleball nets and a portable basketball backboard with hoop will be temporary and movable. By the way, the portable basketball setup weighs about 300 pounds when the base is full of water. This will create nothing but problems when they need to either be set up or moved away, so the next activity can take place. Who's going to do that? For example, let's say that yesterday the space was used by racers, and when they were done, the area was left as a racetrack. There is certainly no basketball hoop or pickleball net in place. So, today, some senior citizens and their friends show up for some pickleball games, or some kids show up to play basketball. Will they be expected to set up their equipment? Or, let's say they do set it up, but it is left there when they're done, and tomorrow, some racers want to use the surface as a racetrack. Will they be expected to move everything out of the way? Other than expecting or counting on everyone who uses this proposed multi-purpose surface to be moving stuff around on a daily basis, the only other solution would be to continually bother the Service Department, which is not a good idea, since they already have plenty of other stuff to do, and they are not on standby, ready to arrive in two minutes to be of service. Four, another issue to consider is access to toilets. When anyone is either at the racetrack or the batting cage area, the ones in the concession, concession stand are almost always locked, and while the ones in the pavilion are sometimes open, it is a several hundred-yard walk to get up to them. It may be a good idea to install a portable toilet down there, regardless of what activities are taking place. Or, better yet, better yet, to install some locks on the doors by the pavilion that are set to open and close via a timer. This would eliminate the need for a policeman or a member of the Service Department to have to bother with looking, locking and unlocking the restroom doors, and the toilets would be available, as well they should be, to anyone who's using any part of the park during the hours that it is open. Five, besides all the above-mentioned challenges surrounding the suggested plan to turn the racetrack into a multi-purpose facility, it will cost the village some money to do all of this, which I do not think was planned for in the budget. So, I have an alternative plan that will cost the village very little, to maybe nothing. I acknowledge that I had no approval from anyone to do this, but I took the liberty and time on my own to do a little research. So, I contacted Mike Serna and Stan Canopa from Serna Construction, and had them give me a price to refurbish the area that is now partly a batting cage and really nothing else. Serna, by the way, is a licensed and bonded contractor here in Walton Hills, and his company has excellent references, one of them being the job they did on our public square. And for the record, this area that I'm talking about measures 69 feet from fence to fence, that's lengthwise, and 42 feet across. Although the batting cages have recently been seldom used, and the nets were not even set up at all last year, I understand from talking to Councilman Nielsen, that there's a plan in place for someone to purchase a new pitching machine that can be kept outdoors and always ready for use. If that is the case, one net will need to be set up, and that will take about 14 feet of the area that goes across, of space, of space. Since the measurement for a pickleball court are 44 by 20, the remaining space is enough room for one court to be located there, rather than in the middle of the racetrack. Serna gave me a price, hold on a second here. Oh, Serna, by the way, is, is a licensed and bonded contractor. Okay. Serna gave me a price of $2,412 for crack filling all the cracks with screening and tar slash seal coating, and striping the pickleball court, and in addition to that, restriping the racetrack, which needs to be restripped. As a courtesy to the village, Mike Serna will discount that price by 50%, which is $1,206. So, that leaves a balance of $1,206. And maybe some of the pickleball, basketball, or baseball enthusiasts, enthusiasts could raise the rest. I'm not an enthusiast for either one of those activities, but I'm willing to make a donation to get this started. Anyone else willing to help? I also know we're waiting until April 30th to get as much possible information back from residents based on surveys that were in the two most recent issues of the Journal as to what folks are most interested in for recreation. That being, that being said, maybe it is prudent, and best to wait until sometime in May before any major decisions are made, and also to give some consideration to what could economically be done with the upper tennis courts, so they could possibly be used for pickleball, or even tennis, or other activities such as cornhole, et cetera. In the end, this may end up being the best solution of all. And maybe our Service Director has some suggestions about a temporary economical situation, a solution, prior to receiving any grant money, which everyone knows we may, or may not even get. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other business? Any from?
No, nothing online.
Okay. I'd like to ask for motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment. COW meeting, Tuesday, April 5th, 2022.
Second.
Second. Vote on the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitsnagle?
Yeah.
Councilman Weeden?
Yes.
Committee of the whole meeting of Tuesday, April 5th, 2022, adjourned at 8:29 PM. Okay. We'll go right into the special council meeting. Everybody ready for that? Okay. Good evening, everybody. Like to welcome everybody to the special council meeting of Tuesday, April 5th, 2022, at 8:29 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Nielsen?
Here.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Here.
Councilwoman Allen?
Here.
Councilman Spitsnagle?
Here.
Councilman Weeden?
Present.
All of council present, along with our fiscal officer, Angela Rube, our law solicitor, John Montello. Okay. Next item is Item 3, legislation. Resolution 2022-6, SharpScape Senior Lawn Care. We just talked about in COW meeting. We've been talking about it for a while. Who would like to introduce after suspension?
Mr.-
I'll do it.
Go ahead, Mary.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce for suspension, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the clerk of the Village of Walton Hills to enter into a contract with SharpScape's Landscaping and Snow Plowing, also known as SharpScape, for senior and handicap lawn care service for the 2022-2023 season, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a second on suspension? Okay. Vote on the suspension.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitsnagle?
Yeah.
Councilman Weeden?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask for adoption of Resolution 2022-6.
Is there a second?
Second.
Nope.
I think Jennifer got it.
Jennifer got you.
Vote on the adoption.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitsnagle?
Yeah.
Councilman Weeden?
Yes.
Okay. Adoption passed. Resolution 2022-6 passed, passed, 5-0. Item 4, can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, VZA appointment, and recreation, Parker staff.
Second.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brenner Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitsnagle?
Yes.
Councilman Weeden.
Okay. Just so residents know that are here, and also residents watching, and anybody else, we will come out of executive session and reconvene. At that time, we will just adjourn the meeting. We won't have any discussion or be voting on anything at that time. Okay, we can, we'll have executive session back there.
We're going to end the live stream now.
I'm going to end the live stream, correct.
Okay, yes. Thank you, everybody. Have a nice weekend.
Go ahead, I'll take those, sir.
Yeah.